Okay, it is two o'clock. We're gonna call this work session to order. Glad to see all your smiling faces, or at least, there you go. Alright, so I think what we're doing here is turning this over to the COPE Committee. And Jamie, you wanna talk to start with, or you just want me to start away? I can't even see you. You're right there. Alright.
Hey, no, that's fine. I'll start us. We have a short, short agenda that we put together. We're basically, would love to hear from Dr. Willet and her team. She's got some things planned for us. Just as a reminder, if anybody has questions, you can submit them to the chat, and then she will facilitate those throughout our discussion today to help us kind of stay on a good direction with the agenda and things like that.
And if I, if I could just interject real quick, what I forgot to say at the beginning is, we sure appreciate all of you doing this for us, for us, for the community. And we know, you know, it's, it's not being said, and I'm going to say this. We know all of you are putting a lot of time, effort, love, dedication, sweat, tears, you name it, into trying to provide our Rockwood students with an outstanding education now that we're going virtual. And please know, I know we're all getting beat up, but we're gonna keep forging forward and hold each other up, and we're gonna love our kids, and we're gonna provide for our kids. So please know that you're all appreciated, and just don't call me if you have problems. No, I'm just kidding. I know that's recorded. But, so, go ahead. And Jamie, I'll turn it back over to you. Thanks for letting me interrupt real quick.
Nope, that was perfect. Thank you for saying that. We, we definitely second that, Dr. Willet. I can't see you because we have so many amazing people here right now. So I'm gonna just turn it over to you wherever I see you. There you are.
Thank you. I really appreciate having the opportunity to showcase the work that's been going on this summer. I thought I would give a little bit of background, and then we can talk about the process a little bit. This process actually started last April. When we were in our Alternative Learning Plan, we received quite a bit of feedback from our public. And one of the first pieces of feedback that we received was that we really needed some common digital tools that all students were using across the district. And we had implemented the Canvas Learning Management System a couple of years ago, and let teachers who wanted to take that dive dig in. And we decided to make that more consistent across the district, that that would solve a lot of our communication and access problems in terms of the number of places that parents had to go last spring to get their assignments for their students. So we're gonna showcase some of those features of Canvas in just a minute, and you'll get to see what that all involves. We really wanna use four features in our Canvas implementation, and that is that parents will have really clear access to the teacher bios, syllabus, and contact information. They'll be able to use the teacher inbox, or in the Canvas inbox, to access teachers. And the wonderful thing about that too is that our elementary students will have access to that, so they can now contact their teachers on their own and learn those skills that they should be learning on how to contact adults and how to ask questions of adults. We are going to make sure that all assignments are posted in Canvas, and there are several benefits to that that we'll show you, having all of our teachers do that, and using our calendar feature as well. So we're really excited about the work that's been going on. That was our April plan, and then in May, we decided to start a Rockwood online writing project. And what that involved was taking our Rockwood curriculum and our Rockwood teaching philosophies. We instilled the help of about 250 people across the district, the curriculum team, our instructional technology specialists, and teachers at all grade levels to learn more about building online content of high quality and using Canvas to do that, and then actually building out that content as it applies to the Rockwood curriculum. So you are correct. It has been a labor of love. We're talking 12, 14-hour days since April, working on all of this and getting this rolling. But we're really proud of the work that's been accomplished, and we're gonna showcase some of that to you today. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Brian Reed, who is our Coordinator of STEM and Digital Learning. He has been at the helm of all of this. We are all so grateful for his expertise and all of the support that he's lent to every one of these writing teams throughout the summer. And you see everybody's heads nodding because we couldn't have done this without him. He's gonna show you some of the features of Canvas and how we're gonna help support our parents and students in that learning management system.
Well, no, thank you, Shelley. It's definitely an honor to be with you all and letting us showcase the hard work that's been going in. I mean, I echo what Shelley was saying. There's hundreds of people that have been involved with this. And so it was just my, my pleasure to be able to pull it together with the support of everybody else here. I mean, it's, no man is an island, right? And so it's really, really cool what we've been, what we've been putting forth. And I'm very, very comfortable saying that this is not anything maybe like you've seen before. I mean, we've had the time to be methodical this summer and truly build a very robust education for, for our students here in Rockwood. And so I'm going to share my screen with you. And as I, as I do this, I'd like to start and break it down, I guess, starting with elementary first, just to show you what our elementary friends can expect to see whenever they are, they're, they're in their Canvas instance. And, and I, and I will say this too, for our parents and caretakers and anybody that's in the role of, of taking care of our kiddos. We've also automated the process where every parent is gonna be invited to Canvas as an observer. And so we're setting up behind the scenes where you could go to the Canvas app, you can go to the Canvas website, and actually follow along with what your, what your kiddos are learning and, you know, how they're interacting with the teacher. You know, you'll have access to some of the features I'm getting ready to show you as well. And so we're truly inviting our, all of our stakeholders to be a part of the learning experience, which is, which is just phenomenal. And so when, when anybody lands on the, on the elementary page, we set one up to showcase Babler. Just know that every school is gonna have their own customized header at this point. And so all of our schools, all of our programs are being represented. And so we just set one up, obviously, to give you an idea of what this is like. And so when you land on the page, you'll see some, some information right away. Obviously, the header being a big part of that, the teacher's name, grade level, content area, just to make sure that you know you're in the right place. And as we scroll down the page, we've definitely made it visually attractive for our elementary friends. We've, we've set it up to look like an app that you would see on a phone or a tablet. And so there's a series of buttons that, that everybody's gonna click on. And so I'll just start from left to right, and then we'll talk about a few other features, and then we'll hop over to the secondary examples too. And so the class information page is one of those where you'll find that contact information that Shelley was mentioning a few moments ago. It will be customized by the teacher, but this is where we're encouraging our teachers to put the Zoom meeting links, so they're easily accessible all in one place. There's gonna be some biographical information, and I would go as far as to say we've been encouraging our teachers to also make introductory videos, not just text, especially for our littles, but at every level, making like, like an introductory video just to get to know the teacher, and also whatever other information the teacher feels is applicable for that area. Class information, same idea, whatever information that, that the families would need to know about that particular class. It could be a list of supplies. It could be a list of, of resources, whatever that looks like. And there'll be some, some information posted there. And then there's a section on what the Canvas pages are going to look like. There's a series of buttons that have been designed, again, to keep it as visually attractive as possible. And so this serves as sort of like that legend in terms of what all the buttons are and what they do. And so a lot of great information is found on that page, of course. And that's all gonna be customized by the teachers once their courses get rolled out to them. I'm going to skip the lessons button temporarily. I'll come back to it in just a second because that requires just a little bit more explanation, which will be a great segue into some of our other curriculum friends that have joined us on the call. But I'll go to the digital learning button next. This is a resource that is on every pre-K through five page that feeds directly to the resources that are, that are maintained at the district level. And so we have quite the number of programs that we maintain at the district level that just enrich the students' learning, and all of them are being tapped into during our, our learning this, this quarter and beyond. And so this is just a quick one-stop shop. All of it feeds through Clever, which is another system that we use to maintain all of these tools. And then down below is a section of the tools that don't feed through Clever. But again, it's the tools that the kids are gonna be continually referring to. This is not maintained by individual teachers. This is a district-level page that we maintain. The parents are also, again, a big component of what we're doing. And so we built a parent resource page as well, just to support what the parents might be needing to do at home, and maybe while they're working with the student on learning, whatever it is they're learning, they can also get connected with the Rockwood website straight away without having to toggle different browsers and tabs and whatever else. And so we've linked them to some of the most commonly used features on the Rockwood sites. We didn't rebuild the Rockwood content. We're linking them to that content. And so maybe they need to replenish the meal planner. They wanna check the calendar schedule or check out what's going on for the library and get their, their free county library card, or maybe they need some Zoom help, or LinkedIn, the technology helped us because maybe their kid's device is having some issues. And so we're trying to make it as user-friendly as possible to help them manage the learning process for their kiddos or with their kiddos, depending on what the case may be. So the other three buttons get us a little bit more into the weeds with, with Canvas. And so I'll jump back to the lessons button. You'll see this again in a few moments when some of our colleagues dive in and show you some actual content. And so what we've done again is design this to be as user-friendly as possible. So whenever the, the lessons button is clicked on, if the teacher is using Canvas for instruction, it's gonna lead them to this page where they have a choice of picking out whichever content they, they wanna work on next. We do have a little bit of a slightly different variation of this for all of our specialty areas, but it's the same idea. And all of these buttons are linked directly to the modules, where you'll actually see the content. And so I'm not gonna click on those now. I'll let our friends unveil that for you later. But that's how the, the students would get access to the actual material if they're learning through, through Canvas. If a teacher is not using Canvas for instruction straight away, then that button, that lessons button will link to maybe their Google Classroom or to a Google site or to maybe a Google folder. There's different ways that the teachers disseminate that information when it comes to lessons, but that's also gonna be customized by the teachers once they get their courses. So the other two buttons, which feed into what Shelley was mentioning about the communication piece, the announcements button takes you directly to any announcements that the teachers make. Now, we've set it up to where the two most current announcements appear at the top of the page. Obviously, I don't have one that's sitting there for you to see. Actually, I can leave student view and show you that. But, so the announcements do sit on, on the top of the page. It also sits in a repository where the teachers and students and parents, whoever visits the page, will be able to see those announcements and go back into the archives as much as they want. And so as a part of our training for the teachers, we've taught them, of course, how to make the announcements. Nice thing though is that you'll see them, the top two most recent ones at the top of the page. There's also a way that we'll roll out some training on this later, but parents, students can get notified of any announcements via the app or via their, their inbox or what have you. And so they don't have to constantly go back to the course to see those announcements, which is really, really neat. The other feature being the class calendar feature. And so as a part of Canvas, there is a built-in calendar, just like there is in, in Google, right? We have our Google Calendar. Well, Canvas has its own Canvas calendar. And so we're asking the teachers to post any major events onto this calendar that they want the families to see. You know, it could be upcoming due dates of, of work. It could be upcoming media, a field trip, or an upcoming meeting of some kind, or maybe there's Zoom meetings. Maybe they wanna put their Zoom meetings on the calendar so they're easily found. There's a lot of great uses for this calendar feature. And I'm happy at a later date to go in and actually show you how to create events and things like that if, if you all are interested in learning more about Canvas as a user. But just know that it, it pulls it all into one place too. And I think that's, that's gonna be a big question. So I have my kids in all these courses. Will everything feed into one place? Absolutely. No matter if it's one student, two students, three students. As a parent, all of that information feeds into one, one place for you, one calendar, one inbox, which I'll show you in a second, you know, one grouping of announcements, that kind of stuff. For students, it rolls all of their courses into one place, which is really nice. And so over on the right-hand side of my screen, even though I've only got my, my main calendar toggled, you'll actually be able to, the kids will be able to see all of their courses here. And so it basically lays on whatever's due on the same calendar. So again, it streamlines that, that, that communication with what's coming up. There is also the inbox feature. So the inbox feature, as Shelley also mentioned, is the very first opportunity for our elementary kiddos to dig in and actually digitally communicate with their teacher outside of a Google Doc or another platform. And so this, this pulls all of the, the teachers together into one place. All of the, the, you know, the, their, their classes will all be streamlined into one inbox. The students can message the teacher. The teachers can message all the students. The teachers can also message, message all of the observers at the same time. So if a teacher needs to send a class message, they could easily do that through the inbox to everybody all at the same time, or they can cherry pick who they wanna send the message to. The nice thing too is that the, the students can actually message each other. And so we've got plans for a nice digital citizenship rollout to, to make sure that they understand the responsibility that comes with that. But what a great way to connect these kiddos together, to, to learn from each other and to communicate their ideas. So again, training will be provided later on all of that, but that is the power of the inbox. It's actually really, really cool. So those are the, the main features, again, the, the inbox, the announcements, the class calendar, and the class information page, along with the delivery itself of the content. I'll pause momentarily just to see if there's any quick questions, and I'll go to secondary. And then we'll, we'll circle back and, and take some more questions after that if you have any. So Shelley, might there be anything in the chat, or does anybody want to unmute?
There is not.
Okay. I hope that's a good sign. So I'll go ahead and jump in then to, to secondary. Oh, please, I'll, I'll pause. Go ahead. Oh, okay. So.
I have several questions. All right, real quickly, Jamie was asking, will this work on all platforms?
Yes, that's the beauty of Canvas. And so Canvas works on all platforms because it is a universal, you know, digital tool. So whether you're on a, on a website or you're on, well, the cool thing is, is there's three different apps, actually, for Canvas. There's a student app, there's a teacher app, and there's a parent app. And so depending on your role, for both iOS and Android, it is readily available. And for any device, whether it's a cell phone or a tablet, or a Chromebook, or a laptop, or, I would even go out as far as to say even a dial-up computer could actually get access to Canvas. So.
I have several questions for you, Brian. This is Tammy Rumber. First of all, the first one's actually for Shelley, and that is, do parents, all the good information you gave us about the work that's been done, has that all been conveyed to parents about the work that our teachers have done, that we have been putting all of this in motion since last, last March?
Yeah, I think some of that, some of that information is probably on the website, Tammy, but I don't think it would be a bad idea to feature some of that work. And now that we're at the point where we're going to start pushing courses out at the end of this week, I think that's probably a really good time to feature that and let our parents know what their children are gonna see.
And Shelley, if I, if I can interrupt, Tamara, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Alex.
It's, also, just literally yesterday, Curtis, he shot a video featuring Brian Reed and three different teachers, elementary, middle, and high, talking about Canvas and talking about what their plans are regarding online education. And I, that video is going to be released, if not this afternoon, then tomorrow. So.
I think, because one of the issues that I, that I keep getting from parents and, and concerned people are that, you know, what have we been doing? And I, we're suddenly here and, and we're jumping into this. And I want them to know and understand how hard Shelley and her team have been putting this, this plan into place, and that it is so very different than what we did in the spring in terms of delivering a robust, I love, wanna use that word a lot, quality education to our students. And so I just really wanna come across, but that's the first point. So thank you, Shelley, and Alex. Brian, this question's for you. On, you talked about the access to Canvas. And are we assured that all of our students will have that access and be able to get into Canvas?
Absolutely, 100%. Since we, all of our users are based on the, the rosters that we're pulling from Infinite Campus, you know, which was what we used for all the state reporting and grading and everything else, every single kiddo will have access to their courses. Now, they're gonna be using them in different ways, right? I mean, some teachers are only using Canvas for communication. Others may use it for instruction. But regardless, every single student will have access. And it doesn't even matter what device they're in, right? Because our K1 is gonna have iPads, and 2 through 12 is gonna have Chromebooks. And so, yeah, I'm excited about that. It definitely makes everything equitable.
And my next question is, well, something that you just referred to, and that is, they're not, are, we're not requiring our teachers to use Canvas then. You're saying they can use other platforms. They can use Google Classroom. And we ran into trouble with that in the spring because some students couldn't get into that. So I, I'm hearing one thing, but now I'm hearing something else. So please clarify.
Sure, absolutely. So since our plan came out back in the spring, our first priority was to tackle the, the biggest sticking point last spring during the ALP, which was communication. And so we, we made the decision at that point to use Canvas for communication 100%. So, you know, the inbox, the announcements, the class calendar, and the, the class information pages, those are mandatorily, have to be utilized by every teacher in Rockwood. After that, it's kind of left open for, for them to use whatever platform for the actual instruction itself to, you know, to make sure they can capitalize on it. And I will say this, even though we have not mandated Canvas being used K12, we've had a lot of teachers figure out very quickly that they're probably going to want to start using Canvas to leverage what they're doing because it's going to, to, well, you know where I'm going with that thought. So we still haven't come out and mandated that they have to use it for instruction, but they do need to use it for communication. Absolutely.
Right. Here's my question, because that's, again, one of the contentions was, so with this teacher, she's using Google Classroom. My kid has to go here, but this teacher's using this platform here, so we're back to, I don't know where my kid's gonna go. And that's gonna come back again to, to hurt us.
So if I may actually clarify that too. So this lessons button, at least for the elementary, and I'll show you the secondary one momentarily, that is, that is where the kids would start gaining their access to those other platforms. So they all start by going to Canvas first.
Okay.
So that's, this is kind of like that, that funnel that's feeding them in, right? We've even actually made it to where Canvas is the very first tab that automatically opens on all student devices. So whenever they log into their Chromebooks for the first time, they're gonna see Canvas as the very first thing that opens. And so we're actually feeding everything through Canvas, and then from there, they may wanna, they may spoke out to go to Classroom or whatever, but they're all landing in the same place. So that's one way.
You're saying, yeah, so let me just repeat that, make sure I'm understanding you correctly, that when they click on the, like, the Canvas lesson button, that will direct them to whatever other platform the teacher's directing instruction to. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they can still access it from one source?
Absolutely.
And then go out. Okay, that, that answers that question.
And actually, if I may also show you one more thing too, to that point, is, this is actually what it's gonna look like when the kids get into Canvas, like, straight away. This is part I didn't show to you because I already had it open. So the Canvas dashboard, they're gonna see their courses on the dashboard that look just like this. So, you know, they, from here, this is like the very first thing they see when they get to Canvas. And then from there, they, they go in and click on whichever course that they needed to open, to, to get into it. And then that's when they see like the lessons and things like that. So just to show that for, for everybody's frame of reference as well.
That's a question. Can I jump in real quick? I just wanted to make the suggestion once, if we could just use that chat feature to put all the questions in there, and then Shelley's gonna facilitate them just because her team has a flow that they wanna work through. And I wanna get to everybody's questions for sure, but just if they're in there, then Shelley can kind of plug them in where, where they can, you know, easily fit in, and Brian can stay on track, because we just wanna honor everybody's time today.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's, I will, I will be glad to do that. The problem is, by the time I type all these questions in, Brian's gonna be gone, onto the next thing. So I'll type them in. I've got several more.
We'll stay around as long as you need me to, after the fact. I will not go anywhere. So, so if I may go ahead and jump into the secondary template. So just know that the philosophy is the same for secondary. It's just that the look is a little bit different. It's a little less elementaryized, if that's a word. And so, you know, as, as we're looking at this, and I wanted to pull up a real example of one too, so you can actually see, every course is gonna have a customized banner. You know, every course is gonna have the, the label. Every course is gonna be as customized as possible when it rolls out. So that's bringing a little credence and credit and honor to the courses too, so it's not just a generic, a generic banner of some sort. We worked really hard last summer. Shelley can attest to that, to get this up and running because we thought that was an important piece because it's a visual component, right? We wanna sell this visually to everybody, as well as, of course, the robust offerings. And so the, the buttons are still the same. As you can see, we still have our modules and lessons button. We have our course information button, our parent resources, our student resources, announcements and class calendars. So I'll go through these as well, just to show you what it looks like. It's gonna be just slightly different. And so the course information button will be personalized, of course, by the teacher, not the, the same, you know, cartoonish sorts of pictures, but this is serving the same purpose, right? So you'll have a teacher bio. You'll have the expectations, you know, that, you know, teachers may embed their, their student behavior contracts, that kind of stuff. They're used to giving out their syllabi and things of that nature. Any course resources that they need can be listed there. And we've also embedded the academic help and the technology help down there as well for our secondary friends, because they're a little more apt to, to be a little more self-sufficient when it comes to some of that. And so we had the information on the elementary side. It was just in, in the technology button. This is a little more spelled out here. And so that's the course information page. Then when you go to the parent resources page, this takes all of our parents to, to, to a very similar-looking resource. I do need to change the ALP one out to the virtual learning one, but just know the feeling is the same here. So the same kinds of buttons, we've kind of cleaned up the, the text a little bit, so it doesn't, again, look as elementary-ish, but it's the same, same idea. The parents can go there and take care of all their Rockwood needs in one, in one place. Student resources, this is really cool too, because this is the virtual locker that we started last year. And so we, we continue to add to this virtual locker. And so these are tools that we do support at the district level as these kids are working on, maybe they're working on a project and they want some media creation help, or maybe while they're working, they wanna check out some college and career readiness stuff. We, we really tried to think through, you know, maybe some research things, just tools that they would need readily available at their fingertips to make sure that they can be as successful as they can be without too much lapse in time. Again, just like before, announcements and class calendar. And if you're okay with me not going through those, since you've already seen those features, it works the same way as the others. It's just the buttons, again, look a little bit different. And then the lessons and modules. Again, nobody is being mandated to use Canvas for instruction. However, when you do go in, this is where the kids start getting to the meat and potatoes of all the lessons that have been set up. You know, everything from discussion boards to quizzes to assignments to Google Docs to reading to embedded PDFs to external web links. I mean, it was really, really cool, and this will be one of the last things I say here, but I had a, a meeting earlier with an art teacher at Lafayette, who I said, imagine this. We're in a virtual setting using Zoom. Yes, we can leverage breakout rooms to have these little student groups work together and collaborate. That's fantastic. But imagine the team teaching that can happen now. You know, maybe I wanna invite another art class to be a part of my Zoom meeting. Now you've got two teachers, team teaching. Maybe one is monitoring the chat. The other one's delivering content, or maybe they're demonstrating, you know, some sort of drawing component with each other. I mean, we're truly having a really wide variety of experiences now that we're going virtual, which, I mean, you can't see my goosebumps, but it almost makes me wish I was back in the classroom because this is just a phenomenal opportunity that we can't necessarily do in person. And so I, I may not make any friends too much when I say this, but I would almost say the education we're being able to offer virtually now could even be a little stronger than what we do in person sometimes because of the way we're leveraging the technology and the way that these lessons and stuff are being written. So, and I don't mean that as a knock on what we do in Rockwood or what we have done because I think we're a phenomenal institution, but just looking at the doors that have opened just this summer with the work we're doing to capitalize on this, it's just, it's just mind-boggling awesome. It really is. So with that being said.
There were a couple of questions about announcements. So the parents will decide how they want to set their notifications, how often they get them, how frequently, where they get those too, and that will let them know when they get those announcements.
Absolutely. So just to give you a quick visual frame of reference, and you can ignore my, my Twitter and cell phone. You, you can call me and follow me. That's perfectly fine. But they're all gonna get a column that says email address, and this is where they get to turn on. How often do they wanna be notified? What, and when, what do they wanna be notified on? And so there's a key, you know, the checkmark, the clock, the calendar, and the X. Just know that we are providing training. We have a series of training for every user, including parents and observers. on how to leverage Canvas to make it work for you.
And then there was a question about students being able to contact other students. They don't get any information about those other students other than their name. And everything is, we have a permanent record of all those things, of all the communications throughout Canvas, and we can easily access those if there were ever to be a problem with that. And we will, of course, teach children how to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. It's the same process we do with Google, right? Because anything that they do in Google is definitely trackable and traceable. So the teachers won't be able to see the students message each other, but if there ends up being a problem, then we can definitely support that and support the buildings and addressing that for sure.
So Brian, is that it for the basic features, you think?
Yep, absolutely.
So I have all my other friends here on standby to show us some actual examples of some lessons. So we may not get to all of them, but I thought I would, I have everybody here to give us some, a variety of what you might be seeing. And so I think I will start with Natalie Fowler. Natalie has been doing a lot of work with Teachers College New York in the Reader/Writer Workshop where students have a lot of choice in what they read. And they have translated those learning opportunities to the online environment for grades six through 12 ELA. So I'm really excited to let her show you what some of those lessons might look like. Natalie, you want to take a couple of minutes?
Thank you, Shelley. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And I also want to say that, just like Brian had said, we have had, our teachers have been amazing at showing up and doing this work. And this would not be possible without them. And so they are kind of the true heroes here. So just to kind of give you an idea, my landing pages look very similar to what Brian showed you. But just to give you an idea of what our lessons are going to look like, this is coming from our eighth grade language arts class. And I'm going to kind of go through some writing ones and then also some reading ones so you can see what that readers/writers workshop would look like. But we start off with the materials that the kids will need. And then we actually have a teacher teaching the lesson. So I'll play a little bit of the snip for you just so you can kind of get an idea. But most of our lessons are going to run anywhere between three minutes and probably 12 is about where our cutoff is. Some go a little bit longer, but it just depends on the, the nature of the lesson.
On section piece or your story or whatever you chose to write. First draft is done. Now we get to move on to, what do I do now? I have my first draft. What's my next step?
So I'm going to pause it here. So from here, she kind of talks about the audience and how we really need to pay attention to who our audience is. And then she gets into a modeling piece where she is talking about a writing piece that she's been working on that has happened a couple of lessons before and telling the students how she's walking through that and paying attention to her audience.
For kids to see, to have role models, not just in real life, but also in literature.
And so then at the end of this lesson, she kind of challenges the kids to go out and practice this work on their own or with their writing partners. So we are still working with partnerships and book clubs in order to make sure that our kids are getting that collaboration with each other and modeling that workshop approach. So at the end, we have the resources and what they're supposed to be doing independently on their own. So even if a parent were to watch this, they could follow along and do this lesson if they wanted as well. So there's no question about what the expectation is and what the students should be doing. And so from here, we hit the next button and it goes straight into that next lesson where, again, we have, this one's a little bit of a longer video because they're doing a little bit more modeling in that video. And they have their independent assignment. And then she also talks about ways that, like they're kind of her anchor chart. So just like you would see in a regular classroom, she's emulating that here in this virtual world. So the next one that I want to show you is, this is one of our, this is probably my favorite course, or not course, but one of my favorite ones. And this is a read aloud. So in the readers/writers workshop, what happens is you want to read aloud to your students and unveil the text and then teach them strategies along the way. And this teacher, when she starts reading, I just want to listen to her read. But before this, like the minute before, she kind of goes through and talks a little bit about the book, and it's Crossover by Kwame Alexander, and it's in verse format. So she kind of goes through that. But I want you to listen to her reading this book because to me, it just draws you in.
Go on, let me read first part of Crossover. Warm up, dribbling. At the top of the key, I'm moving and grooving, popping and rocking. Why are you bumping? Why are you locking? Man, take this thumping. Be careful though, because now I'm crunkin'. Crisscrossin', blossom, flipping. And my dipping will leave you slipping on the floor while I swoop in.
So throughout this, she'll kind of pause and talk and give the students some more strategies to kind of look for whenever they're out reading in their own text. And so again, we have some anchor charts of things that they're looking for. If I jump ahead like 12 lessons.
Hey Natalie.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, but can you unshare your screen and reshare it with your screen sound? You're not sharing your sound. We can't hear this fabulous teacher.
Oh my goodness, thank you for telling me that. All right. So let's try it again. Give me just a second to get right where she was.
Warm up.
Can you hear it now?
Yep.
Okay.
Dribbling. At the top of the key, I'm moving and grooving, popping and rocking. Why are you bumping? Why are you locking? Man, take this thumping. Be careful though, because now I'm crunkin'. Crisscrossin', blossom, flipping. And my dipping will leave you slipping on the floor while I swoop in to finish with a fierce finger roll, straight in the hole. Swoosh.
So that is an example of her doing this. If, sorry about that, about the missing of the, the volume or the audio. If we jump ahead to a later one, it's her still going through this. But again, she has given them, you know, now we're looking for details that point to bigger ideas about characters. And then the students will practice with her, but then they're going to go and do independent practice on their own, in their own books. Again, she gives some examples and sends them off to work. So this is an example of our six, eight curriculum in looking at the readers/writers workshop. I don't know how much time we have, so I want to ask Shelley if you would like to see some of our high school stuff. I'm more than happy to show that.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to switch over to somebody else if that's okay, Natalie. What I did want to point out is that when they built this, we weren't quite sure what environment we were going to be in. So you'll see video lessons there, but our teachers will of course be teaching live lessons. Those video lessons were there in case we were in that hybrid model so that they would have lessons for the days that kids were not in the classroom. So those are there for backup. And the beauty of that is that it's there for kids to access later on if they still need help when they're working on their assignments to get additional learning and go back and review those, or for parents to view so that they can help their students. So it's just an extra resource that we have there. And Tom asked a question about whether those were all Rockwood teachers. Most of them are. We've also used some really good videos that come with our textbook companies or from Khan Academy, those really good vetted resources that we would have in there to teach those lessons. So I'd like to turn it over to Carrie Tom, who is going to show us that our elementary math students will still get to use the manipulatives that we've been doing with them and follow that math philosophy and some of the coursework that we've built for our young ones in math.
Yeah, so I am going to share my screen, maybe. Okay, so this is that landing page that Brian was showing you. And if I click into lessons, this is the page where all of our Canvas lessons will be. So every virtual lesson that we have built, we have built in Canvas to make it very easy for teachers to push out to their students. They can pick the parts of the lessons that they want to push out. They can add pages to lessons if they want, to really personalize it for the students that are in their class. So we have put a third grade lesson in here. And you know what? Let me go back because I want to be in student view to show you what it looks like when a student is in here. Okay, so this is a third grade lesson. This is from the very beginning of the school year. So it's a very basic lesson. This is a Rockwood teacher. This is a third grade teacher from Green Pines. But all of our lessons are set up the way that a lesson in the classroom would be as much as we possibly can. So we start off with our I can statements for every single lesson so that a student knows what they're learning. And as Brian said, we have automated every single action that is on the screen for students. So anytime there is this box, all students have to do is click play. And I apologize, it's my voice over and over and over again.
I can express numbers in different forms.
So if we have a student that is a struggling reader or an ESOL student that is working on language skills, they can still have access to this because everything is read for them. As Shelley said, we weren't sure what environment we were building this for when we started building it. So we made sure that no matter where a student was, no matter what materials they had with them or didn't have with them, that they would still have access to the learning. So we have a virtual manipulative shelf that all students have to do is click. And because I'm in a student view that's not attached to a Rockwood student with a Google account, I can't click it and show you, but it brings up this page. So we have an interactive virtual manipulative shelf. So students, whatever it is that they need for that day, can grab it right off the shelf. For this one, they would probably need their base 10 blocks and it will tell them right there in the directions that that's what they need. And it's hyperlinked and it'll take you right, I don't know why it's not opening right now. But it's hyperlinked, it'll take you right to those, those virtual manipulatives. We also have purchased individual manipulative kits for every student so they will have the actual materials in their hands. But if we had a student that left it at school when we were in a hybrid situation, we didn't want them to not be able to have access to this lesson. Or if we have a student that is at grandma's house for the day and didn't take all their supplies, doesn't have their math manipulatives, we still want them to be able to access the lesson. So that's why we have the virtual manipulative shelf there. We also have digitized every single thing that we have asked students to do, whether it's a practice handout, a workbook page, because if they don't have something, again, we want them to be able to pull it up and they can write it in their notebook. If they have a principal, a printer at home, they can print it out, or we're sending the workbooks home. So that's why all of that is there. Every single one of our lessons begins with a numeracy routine. We've done a lot of professional development in math on the importance of building numeracy and flexibility. So we kept that as part of all of our math lessons. This one is a which one doesn't belong, where students are working with their mathematical practices of justifying and critiquing the reasoning of others. This one has a discussion board with it. So the directions for the student tells them to look at that, look at the which one doesn't belong, pick a reason why one of the numbers doesn't belong and justify it, then put that in the chat. And then the way the chat is set up is they have to answer and then they get to see what their classmates have answered and they can reply to that. So there's some directions for that. And then we get into the actual lesson. And again, everything is automated for students. And I'm going to show you this video because this is Sarah Thompson from Green Pines, third grade. She's a fabulous teacher.
Hi, third graders. Today, we're going to work on naming numbers. This is chapter one, lesson one. Make sure you have your hands on manipulatives or your virtual manipulatives ready to go. Can you read this number out loud? You can read it to yourself or to someone nearby. Say this number out loud. This number is 425. How many place values does the number 425 have? How many place values do you see there?
So she asks students to kind of interact on their own with the video and then she poses a question to them. Then we type the question on the screen and ask students to upload a picture of their work. We give them directions if they don't know how to do that. On every single page that we've asked them to interact with somehow, we've given them directions on how to submit their work. And then we go to the next button. Then in the format of this lesson, then she checks the work with them. And she goes through what they just did with their manipulatives, asks them another question, has them do it. This one, you're not submitting anything, they're doing it in their math notebook. Then they watch, watch her video some more, answer another question. So it's kind of a lot of back and forth, just like you would see in a classroom. And then there is some independent practice. Again, this one is, oh, maybe it's because I'm in student view that this one is, yep. It's just because we weren't tied to a, a Google account when I was in student view. So we have pictures on every page. Again, the question is automated for them and then they submit their work. So this would be the independent practice on this one. And then the next, this would be like a little check-in. Students will click this link and it'll open a, like little quiz where students will answer right in Canvas. And then those answers go straight to the teacher for them to be able to provide feedback on it. Then we have extension, this one, the extension is for them to complete some of the workbook pages in their Math and Focus workbook and then take a picture and submit that through Canvas for teachers to provide feedback on. And then our newest addition to our lessons this year is Dreambox. We're very excited about it. It is our RTI tool that will be able to help us respond to the needs of students. It teaches math conceptually, just like we do in the classroom with that concrete pictorial abstract model. So for our upper level students, we're asking that they complete a lesson and it takes about 30 minutes for them to do that. They're working on the math that they need to be working on, not necessarily what was taught in math class that day, but lessons based on how they are thinking and solving problems. So this will really be able to help us to personalize the learning for students. Dreambox learns what students are thinking through the, the way they solve problems. Instead of just looking at right and wrong answers, it looks at the virtual manipulatives they're using, the strategies they're using for solving. And then it helps either fill in some of those gaps that a student may have or it extends their thinking when students are ready to continue on to another topic. And then for every lesson, we have created optional extensions. Sometimes they're games, sometimes they're puzzles. This one happens to be an online game, reviewing some of the base 10 things that they just did in the lesson that day. When a student is finished, it'll take them to this screen, letting them know, hey, I'm done with this. Then all they have to do is click the home button. And it takes them right back to this page where they go on to their next lesson for the day. And they'll know what they need to do next because the teacher will have set up the day for them in their morning meeting. So maybe in the morning, they're doing the top row. And then in the afternoon, they're working on science and social studies. It just depends on how the teacher is setting up her day. So I'll stop sharing.
Thanks, we had a comment to see another high school, RCA high school lesson. So Megan Bray, could you walk us through a science lesson, please?
Sure. All right. So can you see my screen okay? All right. So I'm going to show you a little bit with biology. Again, echoing kind of what has already been said, our teachers have been great and, you know, really want to provide excellent resources and lessons for our students. And, you know, whatever, whatever method that was going to be what the start of the year would happen to be. So for biology, I'm starting off just to orient you in our unit one. And I'm just going to run through the very first lesson that they're going to see for the beginning of the year. So we have kind of some welcome videos and that personalized information that the teacher would complete prior to the start of the school year. And I'm going to jump into our line unit. So a little bit of background about this unit. Pedagogically, it's a storylining unit, which our storylining course, where we've pulled out real world. Pedagogically, it's a storylining unit, which our storylining course where we've pulled out real world phenomena that's authentic to students. And they will actually run through overarching concepts in science through a storylining method. So I'm going to show you what that really means for this unit in line. So you will see that at the very beginning, the students are provided with objectives for this particular lesson. They're looking at, they're wanting students to ask questions that are observable. They can research and clarify their questions. And really to have students drive their lessons. Further down, you'll see that we have a lion field notebook. So our teachers have built this out to be kind of a supplement to what they would normally see as maybe a lab notebook. Allowing for a digital option, also allowing the students to have the autonomy to do it in a lab notebook if they prefer. So giving them multiple ways to access the, the work there. So for this particular lesson, the students would start off with an article to read about lions in Africa. And then I'm going to show just a small clip of this battle at Kruger video. I'm going to skip forward. All right, I'm gonna go out of there. So you see kind of a sneak peek and definitely like a quick catch for students to get interested in that content and wonder. You know, their first lesson is about what do you wonder, what do you see? And in that lion field notebook, I notice I wonder, could it be? So the students really start driving the lesson by asking their own questions that they're interested based on the content. And we'll see that it's kind of cyclical in nature that will keep coming back to that particular battle at Kruger. If you're interested to see how the buffalo does, that is available to you. I can send you the video, but it's a, it is an actual video. And we have field notes from, from research that was done in Africa to kind of bring in that authenticity. So with that first attention grabber, students start discussing with their, their peers and the discussion boards that are natively in Canvas and students are able to discuss back and forth, ask questions with their, with their peers. After that, like I said, cyclical in nature, they'll come back and really start thinking about, now that they've watched the video, look a little bit more closely, watch it again, look at the buffalo herd and their behavior, the lions and their behavior. And eventually there's a crocodile in the video as well. So the lesson is really about exploring how behaviors increase survival and chance of reproduction. And this storyline eventually drives to get into the genetics and looking at alleles and genotypes within lions and seeing why they hunt as a group and looking at their energy level and how they can utilize their energy to hunt as a group to get that energy put back into their system by consuming another animal. And eventually you'll see that in these lessons, there are extension activities that the teachers can utilize to push out the students as well. And same thing, kind of with Natalie's videos, we have our teachers that have put together videos to walk students through activities. And ultimately come back to those questions that they were asking in their lab lion field notebook and questions that they were wondering and building connections through that. And then the final part of this as of the formative assessment is to create a CER or a claim evidence reasoning. So the students would have a rubric about what a CER is and how to create that and they're scaffolding along the way. But students are going to create a claim about how the behaviors of the lions and hunting in a group, what, what that does for the lions and their energy level and provide evidence and reasoning as to their claim. I will stop there. That's kind of the first lesson in biology. Any questions about that?
So Jamie, I don't know how many more examples you guys want. I've got secondary math here. I have elementary science, elementary social studies. Let's see, who else did I miss? Brian probably has some hands-on courses that he could show you. So, and ELA, sorry, Stephanie, elementary ELA. So.
I think you guys have given us a really good glimpse of what that's, you know, looking like and what all the options and capabilities are. I think, as you guys have said a couple of times, could you touch a little bit more about the live feature of the teachers in the classroom? And obviously we're not looking at that right now. We're looking at other components of it. And so I want to make sure everybody understands that the teacher in the classroom, their assigned teacher is really who everybody's going to have the most, you know, face time interaction with.
Yes, that is correct. So teachers will be doing live instruction just like they would. They have these tools to use. They don't have to use the things that we've built out, but they can. And I think it's really important too, that we, we've gone a little bit beyond Zoom in the capacity that we used it in March. So we were doing a lot of class meetings, check ins with kids. We've really got a lot of capability to do small group and individual instruction in Zoom and utilize some of those collaborative techniques that we would use in the classroom in a different way with Zoom. So our kids won't be losing those opportunities in this environment. We've actually learned how to navigate those and we've done a lot of teacher training on that to get people used to those features so that we can do those.
Can I speak for elementary on that one too, Shelley? With elementary, we've designed it so the kids can complete these lessons independently. Like when Carrie was walking through, everything is very user friendly for the kids. The primary role of the elementary teacher is really to follow up and do small group instruction, strategy groups, guided reading groups, math strategy groups, one-on-one conferring. So really doing that instructional piece that is responsive to the needs of the learners in her class. We designed these lessons so that on day one, August 24th, the teacher can do her whole class Zoom and then the kids can get online and begin their lessons right away. We want to send a message to our parents and our students that every day is a learning day. And that when we begin school on the 24th, they will be able to get in and start those lessons. As a former first grade teacher, I wholeheartedly believe in building relationships with my kids and that class community. So we worked really hard across all content areas to make sure that those first lessons build a community of readers and build a community of writers and talk about math growth mindset and really help bring the class together. So I think sending that message out from day one will be really important. We're hosting some meetings next week for teachers to come and learn how to do the combined, you know, have the kids learning the lessons independently and then the follow-up that they will do with kids face to face via Zoom. So we're excited.
Thank you. Shelley, anything else that you want to highlight or talk about?
Just that these people have been working really hard. Our teachers have put together some excellent lessons. You know, Jamie Smith and Carmen Harris are here. We, we've been working together. We'll make sure that our kids get the special education support that they need. Stephanie's got RI lessons that she's working with our RI teachers. So any students who have that will have it. Jeff's here with ESOL. All of our ESOL services will be delivered through this platform. So our kids will get all the supports that they would have gotten any other time in this environment with those teachers face to face with them, which is really nice.
Would you say that this platform gives the classroom teachers all, all of these resources and tools, but also the ability to kind of blend their personality and their class teaching style to the resources and tools that you guys have built and given them so that they can, you know, have their science class the way they like to have their science class and things.
Absolutely. We built it so that they could have the ultimate support, but they also have the ultimate personalization to it. And that's really why we built it that way.
Awesome. Dr. Miles, were you saying something?
Always trying to. I extend my thanks and appreciation to this entire team for your work. As we began to examine this possibility after March 13th, your work over the summer has resulted in an incredible product. And I'm looking forward to watching our kids continue to grow and learn, to see our staff members take on this new challenge before them as we put our very best foot forward. So thanks to all of you for organizing and leading this effort. It's incredible.
Shelley, there's a question in the chat from Lynn.
I saw that. So Lynn would like to get a brief overview of how literacy will be accomplished, especially in kindergarten and first grade.
I suppose that would be me.
Yes, it would.
Let me share my screen. Lynn, I have a second grade one pulled up, ready to share, but they all look very similar. And I'm happy to stick around and show you a kindergarten one if you would like. But again, you'll notice it looks very similar to how Carrie's looked. We all used the same icons, the same formatting. So that as kids navigate from one course to the next, it is very user friendly. You will notice my voice on a lot of these as well. We added icons for the K1 kids in addition to the voiceover for reading and writing. So then we have, this is a lesson about using post-its to mark your thinking. April is a.
Hi, readers. I hope you're having a wonderful day today. So we have been working so hard on scooping up our words and reading faster and smoother, but we're also working on.
I just wanted you all to hear her sweet voice. But everything is very elementary. And then they have visuals that they, the visuals that they used in their lessons are available. So when you think about when you walk into an elementary classroom, you see all of the anchor charts all over the room. We're providing digital anchor charts. Any anchor chart that they're using in their lesson, we provide for the kids. So this is the one that she just did with second grade about noticing and posting things in their books. And then these are the, the last two anchor charts from the two previous lessons so that kids have access to everything that has been taught recently thereto. While I'm thinking about this, we are encouraging kids to read real books and write on real paper. Especially the writing piece for K2. So much research has been done about the actual texture of the pencil on the paper. We really want kids writing with a pencil or a pen on real paper and reading real books. So we're working with the librarians and reading specialists and classroom teachers to come up with plans for how to get the books in the hands of the kids. Because we do think it's important that our little ones especially step away from the screen and spend some time reading and writing without being on the computer. But we do have in our lessons, all of the digital resources that are available to them. So that if they run out of books or if they don't have anything to read, they can simply click on one of the links and it will bring them directly to books that they can find. And then this lesson talks about taking a picture of a sticky note you wrote in your book. So the kids would take a picture and upload it into Canvas and the directions are all there. Even our little ones will be taught how to do things like this so that they can participate and share with their class. Is that enough Lynn or would you like to see more?
No, I think that's, that's perfect. Thank you. That's, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then for reading intervention, they will each have their own Canvas course, but they will, kids will not be doing online work for reading intervention. It will all be small group, interactive, responsive teaching through lessons.
I want to point out too, that our librarians are working on plans for curbside pickup for kids to be able to get library books. Margaret Sullivan, Margaret Sullivan has been working with them on that. So we'll be prepared to get books into kids' hands as well. Tom asked a question about AP classes. So let's talk about that a little bit. Those students that do not have an AP class second quarter, we've got that eighth block that we have for student support. And we'll be working with our AP teachers to offer review materials and sessions for those students to keep their learning going before they start the third and fourth quarters of AP. Our students, our teachers are very well versed in review and they off, they always offer a lot of review for our students prior to the test. So that will continue to occur and we'll make sure that they have those sessions available to them. And then we'll make sure that they also have things to keep their skills going during those times that they're not in an AP class. We're going to actually start some AP sessions with teachers together once we get started in school. But the content facilitators and coordinators here have been reaching out to their individual AP teachers. Any other questions? Oh, Tammy has, reading, will reading intervention be face to face for all instruction, one-on-one or small group? Stephanie, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes. So I guess by face to face, we mean screen to screen. Yeah, we don't want to spread, spread the message that they're all, kids are all coming in for RI. But yes, it will be set up the way we always do, Tammy, with set eligibility criteria. For those, and then once they meet that eligibility and are officially enrolled in RI, then groups will be set up. And teachers will try to be responsive and group kids by similar needs, just like they do any other time. And kids who need to be seen one-on-one because they don't quite fit right with the group will be seen one-on-one, just like they are face to face. So it'll take a little figuring out, but we had a tech meeting earlier today with Glenn to, to talk about the assessments we're going to give and how we're going to give them. And trying to push those up as soon as we can so that we can get that eligibility criteria figured out and get those kids started as soon as possible. We'll probably have some groups at the beginning where the RI teachers just pull their kids that they had before spring break and just do some follow-ups with them. Because we're confident that many of them will probably still need our services. So we thought we could jump right in and at least do some follow-ups with those kiddos right away before we finish with our eligibility criteria.
Shelley, Tom had a good question about the eighth block for the high school kids, how that's going to work since they only have seven.
Yes. So we will have some time to build that eighth block out. Lisa and I will be meeting with the high school principals to discuss that. Middle school does have an eighth block, but high school does not. So we will be using that time for those reviews and those kinds of things. But that will be a plan for the high school principals and us to structure that out, but it'll be a lot like flex time. So we'll be offering those kinds of things.
Classes, second.
Sorry, Jeff. All right. Anything else?
So Shelley, there was a question about the CCL. So I can, if you don't mind, I mean, we, we have every special area, including CCL. Everybody's going to have their own templates. And so everything from CCL to even early childhood, actually. And for the parent communication, we've designed templates for them to SSD, reading interventions. I mean, all of our specialty areas will be affected as long as, as long as their roster, they're going to get, get the Canvas courses for sure.
So Lisa and Dave.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions in the, in the chat about that. I would tell you, our principals have been working with teachers. They're really excited, especially since teachers are going to be in the building. Principals have already talking about walking around. Number one, they want to walk around and get involved in those Zoom sessions with kids so they can see kids as well. So they're going to be a big part of that, especially setting up in the beginning of the year and being part of what those teachers are doing. So it won't be uncommon. I know at the elementary level for principals to see their, for teacher, for students to see their principals. But yeah, that, the. But yeah, that the principals know this and they've talked about, most of them have had staff meetings. And what they're hearing from our teachers is number one, they're, they're excited about the support from the curriculum department. But number two, our teachers are really wanting to send, to hit a home run with this. They're really looking forward to kind of proving to our parents what kind of online delivery they can, they can show, you know, what's, what we're capable of. So I know that our principals are really excited about it. And yes, they're going to be, as part of that evaluation process is making sure that our teachers are, are doing this quality of work that we're demonstrating here today. So that's been the talk of the town this week for sure. Our principals looking forward to supporting teachers with, with all that's been provided for them.
I would just echo what Dave said. Our principals are very excited to have teachers back in the building. I know they're working on how they can support teachers, you know, just, just making through lines and getting, getting information from the curriculum department. Again, they feel very supported and very prepared. I was telling Dr. Miles today, I ironically ran into a Rockwood Summit teacher today. I was at a doctor's appointment actually and bumped into her. And so we started chatting and I mean, she just was going on and on about, you know, the Algebra III curriculum and how excited she is. And Marietta, she, she gave a direct, you know, shout out to you and, and just the great work that's going on. And she said, she was very grateful to have been a part of it, even though she was a little overwhelmed at first, but now she really feels like she has a handle on it and is really prepared. So principals, like Dave said, principals will be joining Zoom calls pretty regularly, no different than if they're in the school building with kids and teachers. They will be popping into Zoom calls and doing, you know, drop-in evaluations that way. And yeah, we will, someone asked about the TEI, we will continue with teacher evaluations. In fact, there's a small group of us meeting next week to talk about what changes might we want to in this, this timeframe make to our evaluation instrument so that we are properly evaluating teachers in an online setting, because certainly it looks very different than teaching live in a classroom with 25 or 30 kids. So Katie and Tracy and Human Resources, of course, are leading that out. And they've invited us to, to join in and just see if there are some things that we can tweak even on a short-term basis that we can best evaluate our teachers and support them during this time. So principals are very excited. They feel very supported and you know, they're even getting, you know, they're having opportunities to speak with parents. And they're, they're really feeling like we're, we're well-prepared.
Anything else?
Shelley, it looks like Tom's got a, one more question about AP. If students are taking multiple AP courses, how will the eighth block look and work?
So that's what we're going to be doing when we're meeting with teachers is figuring out in each building, how to make that schedule work so that kids have access to all those AP tests. So that's really our next step in that so that we don't leave any child behind because we know that we have, have students that take quite a few AP tests and we don't want them to have to miss those opportunities. So we'll work that out at each building so that we can get that rolling and make sure that our kids are well-supported.
Awesome. I know we touched on a CCL update and incorporating that. So could we touch on a special education update as well? I know we also talked about interventions and things, but I don't know if you guys would like to give any kind of update on where you're at. So far, I realize a lot of work still to be done. So.
We are. We're working on those distance learning plans for every student so we can outline what those services will look like and collaborate with our families. So they'll have that plan of action. Our general educators will have that plan and all of our related service providers will have those plans as well. The great thing with working with Brian is that we'll have that accessibility through Canvas. So our families will have that one-stop shop alongside their general education partners. We're looking at delivering that service to them as much as possible as they would receive it in person. So we're using some of our tele-practices for delivering our specialty services like speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy. And then we're looking at a variety of different materials that we may send home to families so that they can be supported in the special education services that they've been receiving virtually. And we'll provide to the greatest extent possible those services that are listed on the IEP. We also have Town Hall that will be happening next week on Friday where families will be able to participate and ask questions. And I will be answering those next Friday.
Awesome. Hi. Thank you very much, Carmen. I think we have just maybe one more specific thing on our agenda and then we can open it up for any additional questions or things that anybody would like to be covered. And that is a really important component, just as important in my opinion, as the educational piece of this is the social and emotional piece of all of this and how we're going to be reaching and connecting with our kids. So Dr. Harris, I think you're here, trying to find you for a quick update on things that are going on.
Yeah.
If you talk to us about that. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you to Shelley and your team for all the work that you're doing. Obviously, we know that the, the heavy lifting was definitely in the curriculum department, but we also want to make sure that that we take this opportunity to think about the mentor and social emotional wellbeing of our students. School, as we know, is this space where it's, it's a level of normalcy. And the reality of the matter is that, that normalcy is not, not the same. I was having a conversation with some people not too long ago and sharing how, for me, this feels like a 9/11 moment. And I don't really want to say that lightly. But you know, on September 10th, you could walk your loved ones all the way to the terminal, probably even to their seats. And then 9/11 happened and then on 9, 9, the September 12th, all of those things changed. And we're frustrated and you know, we couldn't take toothpaste through the, through the terminal. And then at some point, we're just used to it. So my daughter doesn't know a life outside of these new rules. And I don't necessarily want to have people afraid about any of those things. I, I just want to talk about the reality that school as we know it will look different from here on out, especially in this space. And hopefully we can come back to what we perceive to be normal. But in the meantime, we want to make sure that we're taking care of our kids. I think that we say a lot that our first priority in the Rockwood School District or in school systems is the safety of our kids. And I believe that. And part of that safety is the emotional safety. And so there, we know that the data is up, that kids are struggling, anxiety, depression, all of those different things. And part of our approach is to have, have to acknowledge that. And so I mentioned, I don't know, maybe in cabinet one time and Shelley and her team added this to the schedule, which I really appreciate it. But we're going to have something that's called Mindful Mondays built in our schedule. So for middle school is right at eight o'clock or right at the start, about a 45-minute piece. And that's just a structured piece that, that we're going to offer. Obviously, I think, you know, most of our teachers are also going to include some type of SEL activities. And then at the high school level, it's the same thing, but they have a longer block, maybe like an hour and a half or so close to two hours. So here's what that's going to look like. We're going to partner with the PIE department. But we're also going to partner with Katie and her team because not only are we thinking about creating space for students, we're also thinking about creating space for our teachers. Glenn and Renee and I were on a call today with EAB, the research company that we use. They did a survey of teachers around this, this SEL piece. And 80% of teachers said they are struggling with some level of anxiety or depression. 80% of our teachers. Now, I suspect that that's going to go away on August 28th, right? Right? When, when people start to jump into it and figure out, okay, we got this. But right now, teachers are stressed, parents are stressed and students are stressed. And so we're going to have to deal with that. So we're going to create it, create these multiple strands for our students. We've done this. Six years ago, we created an SEL conference at Lafayette High School. For us, this is, this is not new. We just needed the space and we had that within our schedule. So we're going to offer yoga classes for our students, elementary through high school. It's optional. We're going to offer mindfulness for our students, introduction to mindfulness. We're going to offer affinity groups. This is the one piece that I think that we don't really talk about, but the research is showing us that students who are, identify as members of the LGBTQA community are really struggling right now. We also know that individuals who are homeless, we are seeing an increase in depression as well as drug and alcohol abuse. So we know Lisa probably sees about 100 kids every single year for, you know, doing something silly with drugs and/or alcohol. And so how are we going to follow up with those students that still create a space where we're keeping their, their, you know, that the confidentiality pieces in, in play, but also getting them the help that they need. So my team is prepared for all that mindfulness, mindful art, journaling. Brittany and her team will continue to have their girls and boys groups. Our counselors are going to present a lesson once a week. And I met with the middle school as well as high school folks and shared with them that if Lafayette counselors want to do a lesson just for Lafayette folks on Mondays, they have that opportunity to do that. But if the counseling team would like to just say, we want to introduce, you know, mindful practices for test-taking strategies. Well, we can send that link out and because we're all virtual, if a kid at Lafayette wants to participate, but the counselor at Summit is offering that, that kid would have that opportunity. And the big piece that we want to do is create a space where some type of feedback form. And Glenn, I haven't had a chance to speak with you about this, but giving kids the opportunity where they can write in to us and say, this is what I need. So we want this to be real, real life responding to the needs of our students. There are some things that are very basic. We're going to, every week we'll offer yoga, every week we'll offer mindfulness, every week we'll offer journaling, every week we'll off, offer some self, you know, self-expression. We have opportunities for our counselors. We'll have a group therapy. Those are going to be staple. But then there may be some things that we're not thinking about that our kids need that we can throw in there as well. So for us, for the Student Services Team, we've been doing this for the last six years. It's, we're ready to go. We have the resources. We have the partnerships. We're working with Alive and Well St. Louis to create some virtual things for every grade level, how to respond to trauma. Shelley and I had a conversation this morning. You know, there, we're, we're going to get an opportunity to see inside kids' class or houses and homes. And so, you know, what do you do if you see someone walk past the screen and, and, you know, yelling at a kid or this kid is frightened about certain things? How, how do you respond to that as a teacher? I think that a lot of people know that kids are somewhat traumatized with this whole situation. And I think we need to give our teachers the tools to be able to do that. That's students. The student piece is easy. We have those relationships. We have the space. We have that, the schedule. We just need to get the links out. And then we go to the teachers. So we're going to offer most of the same things for teachers. It's just going to look differently. It's not necessarily a built-in into the schedule. We'll have things early for, you know, eight o'clock and then things at 4:30 and just offer all of these on-demand mental health, self-care activities for teachers to take advantage of. We have a wonderful partnership with our EAP folks. And I just think that our teachers have to take advantage of those opportunities. This summer, we were able to work with Katie and her team to offer some virtual supports for teachers and we're just going to continue to do that. I was hoping that I can, today after the meeting we had with our EAB team, get in contact with Call and, and the Communications Department to figure out a way that we can have a landing page for self-care. I love the virtual locker. And I wonder if we can have a virtual locker that is specific to self-care for our teachers. So they can, we can, every lesson that we do around yoga or mindfulness, we can upload those things. And if they don't catch them live, then they can go into the virtual locker to be able to receive some of those resources at their, at their own pace. So we're ready to go. We have some, some wonderful things planned. I met with my team. Amy and the nurses are going to put together these activities to help, help little kids understand hygiene, you know, what is COVID, how to wash your hands, why that's important. So we feel pretty good there. Brittany and Carmen Fisher met to discuss food. So we're going to continue to feed our students. We're going to do home visits. The social workers are aware of that. Well, we're just ready to go. I think, you know, we're ready to go with what we have. And our biggest challenge is how do we respond in real time? Because I don't want to just offer things and it's not really something that the kids are in need of. Any questions?
I just put this in the chat, but I'll say it out loud too. I, you know, the last few years have noticed how teachers have really adapted their greetings of students as they come in each day or just little subtle differences in interacting with kids each day, whether it's how that child is comfortable with, you know, their greeting. Is it a handshake? Is it a fist bump? Is it a hug? And then I've also seen some amazing things teachers have done with, you know, just emotional health check-ins for the day. I remember a classroom at Westridge, the teacher with the iPad had some really cool ways for kids to just let the teacher know how they're feeling that day. And so I think it'll be exciting to see how our teachers in this environment adapt some of those strategies to continue to check in with their kids and, and really just, you know, form that relationship, but really have that deep connection as best they can in this capacity.
Can I just add one more thing to Terry's awesome work? His team has just really been thinking outside the box on how we support our, our students and our teachers during this time. Our administrators, the, the other kind of added benefit of this terrible time we're in is, you know, they, they will be an additional layer of support for students. In that, you know, teachers will be on the front lines with, with kids, you know, virtually. But you know, we have a whole network of, of staff in our buildings every day with administration and counselors. And so those, those folks will be there to do personal check-ins on kids. And, and that would be K through 12. I mean, that's, you know, in all of our buildings that principals and counselors will be there. As teachers might bring those concerns forward, like, hey, you know what? I haven't seen, I haven't seen Brian log in in the last three days. Let's, let's figure out what's going on. And so, you know, we will be using people in all kinds of capacities these upcoming weeks because school does look different. We don't have, you know, 1,300 kids at Rockwood Summit High School, but we still have 1,300 kiddos that we want to check in with every day. So I think we'll have an opportunity to use some of our staff in those capacities as well.
Yeah, Lisa, I think that's a good point. I was having the conversation maybe with Shelley this morning about that. I think that this is an opportunity for us to like, really take a step back and, you know, see what's going on with, with kids. I think, I think it's, it's easier to hide when you're in person versus virtual, right? If you're not logging on or if your, your screen is always off or, you know, you can clearly see something is going on. And I think those are signs that we just need to make sure that our teachers are aware of, aware of. And I think we're partnering with Alive and Well and just those offerings would be able to help with some of that.
So Jamie put in the chat something too, that it has to do with that four-hour four hours of classes for the high school kids, the four classes at a time. There really, there really is a large social emotional component to that. It's really difficult to build relationships and, and nurture those in this online environment with seven different classes and seven different teachers. And we've never started the school year in this environment where kids have never met their teacher, they've never been face-to-face with them. And so having those four classes will really allow our teachers to hone in on students and watch what's going on and really nurture those kids because it's an all-new environment for them. It's very different than it was during the Alternative Learning Plan. And that will afford us that opportunity to get to know students well and be able to support them in the environment.
Yeah. And thanks for saying it, Shelley. Tammy, to your, your question, I think, when I say teachers, I probably should say staff because we're definitely going to include administrators. We've heard a lot of, you know, that, that, that they need some support as well. And Jamie, PIE department is continuing to collect supplies and backpacks. I think Emmanuel reported that we received something like 250 or 300 backpacks from churches today. Brittany and the social workers and the counselors are still using the Giving Place to receive supplies. And I know we're partnering with the YWCA or YMCA to receive supplies. Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the elementary level, the, the supply list is pretty general. And so we're passing out, I should, you know, Dave, you can jump in as well, but we, we're getting that list out to parents and any parent that our family that is missing anything, then they contact us and Brittany and the social workers, the therapists, the counselors, Rockwood Giving Place and the PIE Rockwood Giving Place and the PI department, we're all going to jump in to make sure our students have what they need. I remember, you know, we, whenever I was over the VIC program, I used to say all the time that transportation is never a barrier. Because I think sometimes people think, oh, these kids live so far. I think Rockwood School District for years, 30-plus years of this participating in the VIC program, has done a wonderful job with making sure that students had transportation. Now that I'm in this role, Student Services, I would say that supplies are not a barrier. I mean, we have a lot of resources, we have great partnerships right here in our district, districts, we, district, we just have to identify those students. So it's, it's going to be imperative that our teachers, you know, they're paying attention to see that the kids have what they need. And if they don't have what they need, it's okay, we can inbox them or call them separately and someone is going to make a home delivery to make sure kids have what they need. We have the supplies, we have the resources, we have the connections, we just need to be able to identify those students. And, and I would say if, if for you guys who are, you know, really big in the community and people are asking what can they do at this time? If, if, if individuals want to make a donation, I would say, you know, make a donation to the Giving Place or Rockwood Gives Back because that allows us to purchase clothing, housing, material, housing, pay bills, school supplies, all those things. So that gives us a little bit more latitude to be able to support our families. Over the course of this last summer, we, we spent thousands of dollars supporting families who were unable to pay bills, in need of clothing, in need of just stuff. So if we can identify those, those families, we can, we can support them. School supplies will not be a barrier for kids being successful virtually, not in Rockwood, not with this team. That's all I have, Jamie. And I, and that we, we're working on our schedule, schedule in a sense that we're working on our offerings. So hopefully by Monday or Tuesday of next week, we would have confirmed with all of our partners and we're having an issue offering so that we can put out there and show you the teachers and students what, what they can participate in. And then that list will just continue to grow over the course of the virtual learning.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. That is a good update to hear and from all of you. I don't know, board members, I'm not seeing everybody on my screen. So if anybody has any additional questions or thoughts or would like to talk to any of these folks about anything, feel free to ask those now. We'll give it a few minutes and then otherwise we will let everybody get back to work.
Tammy, you had a sports question, so I'll jump in with that. I met with a group of superintendents today. We did not make any decision in relation to athletics. We are planning to meet again on Friday morning at 11:30 and plan to discuss and make a decision at that time and will likely be communicating with our families Friday afternoon related to athletics within the district.
Tom's got a question in the chat. I don't know who might want to take that. It's a question about lunch breaks for all school levels and coordinating those.
Yeah, we really tried to keep a balance before and after lunch with the number of classes and what kids would be doing and with the different start times, that's a really big challenge to get those lunch breaks to line up. So it, it would be pretty challenging to do that at this point.
Shelley, is it true that all the lunchtimes for elementary though are the same?
Yeah.
Yeah. So for K-5, all 19 schools, we did have 12 schools that were late start and I, or seven that were early, but all, all elementary schools will have the same time, not K-12, but for the 19.
Yes. And that block at the beginning of the high school day, that teachers are available for appointments, was put at the beginning of the day as well so that if older siblings needed to be available to get younger siblings started on coursework in the morning, that could also take place then too, before they actually start their first Zoom. So we talked about putting that in the middle of the day, but then we felt like the beginning of the day might be easier on some families who needed that support from their older children to help younger ones.
Anybody else? I really appreciate the time you all took out of your day. I know everybody is working feverishly right now to make this the best experience for every student in our district and we appreciate that so much. We will, I guess, Laura Lee, you want to end us out here? I don't know where you are, but.
Yep, I'm right here. So we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nice job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.